Roger Sprague.
Here.
Not hearing any sound. Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Agleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norakis.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
And Henry Quant. Here. Since we have a full house, all those citizens who would like to come forward and present comment, and since we actually in reality have an empty house except for staff, I guess we'll continue. We have before you the minutes of the meeting of March 25th, 2013. Any corrections or additions that need to be made?
I have a question regarding the minutes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Looking at E2, page 2, Agency Member Ryan expressed concerns with power surges regarding the Crosswalk Project, and Ms. Bradley said they would check on that. I wonder, have you heard anything, Allison, from Public Works regarding that issue? Please, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion's carried. First order of business on our agenda is the Business Expansion Loan Program. Allison, by the way, Allison, I understand that congratulations are in order.
Thank you.
And what is the degree that you have just received?
It's actually a certification. It's, uh, sorry. It's for planners, and it's the AICP designation. It's the American Institute of Certified Planners, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You already have a degree in what, in where?
I have a Masters in Urban and Regional Planning from Cal State, or, I'm sorry, University of California, Irvine.
You've got to get that straight where it was from.
I better. I know it's the anteaters.
Okay, the Business Expansion Loan Program.
Good evening. Last year, you selected to move forward a Business Expansion Loan Program as one of the agency's economic development tools, and I know you've seen this a few times now that we've been refining the program. The goal of the program for our listening audience is to make loan funds for business expansion available to commercial properties and businesses in the urban renewal district. The program interest rates would be 0% to 2% depending on how much you would.
Excuse me just a second.
Sure.
I think we're having some audio trouble. I don't believe that you're projecting at all.
Okay. We'll wait a moment till we get the all cleared.
Was the public able to hear outside? Okay. Not back here. Okay, let's proceed then.
Okay, great. The goal of the Business Expansion Loan Program is to make loan funds for business expansion available to commercial properties and businesses within the urban renewal district. Program interest rates would be 0% to 2% and payback not more than 10 years. It depends on how much an applicant would be applying for. And the loan amounts would be no greater than $75,000, and this would be the same as the Facade Improvement Loan Program. After reviewing and revising drafts over the last couple of agency meetings, staff met with Cascades West Financial Services, and we got some feedback, more information. And so the next steps for this program is, next step is to finalize the program document, which you have in your staff report. And after approval of that, if there are any changes, we can definitely do that. But if you should approve it tonight, then we would proceed with finalizing a partnership with Cascades West for administering those loans. So the last outstanding item is about the job creation and retention. And from what we understood, you wanted to not exclude job retention, but also encourage job creation. And so we spoke with Cascades West about this and also the city attorney. And what we would recommend, if you do want to require job creation and retention of all applicants, we do believe it's most appropriate to require applicants show evidence that the loan will add or retain staff for loan amounts of $50,000 or greater. If someone's taking out a loan for $25,000 or even $5,000, it's a little bit difficult to imagine that that amount would really enable them to increase their productivity enough to hire a full-time equivalent. So we really felt that $50,000 would be reasonable. And so if you do want to have discussion or have any questions about this, we can easily make changes and then be ready for approval. Do you have any thoughts about?
Any comments?
That threshold?
I would agree.
Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Chairman, that if we are going to require, and I think it's a good idea to require job retention and/or addition, but I agree, $50,000, less than $50,000, it would be really difficult to try to ascertain whether that's going to really work. But $50,000 to $75,000, I think that's a reasonable requirement for that kind of a loan.
Okay, other comments?
I agree with those comments. I guess I didn't understand, Allison, that there were two suggested wordings in that category. One applicant must show evidence that this business expansion loan will create a high probability of adding or retaining staff. Or, to me, that's very firm. The other one, and I think that's the one you were suggesting, was show evidence that this business expansion loan will add or retain staff.
Yeah, so.
Maybe I've got them the reverse then. Probabil, the first one was a high probability, the other one is will add or retain staff.
Yeah, and I think what we do is just do some general clause that for employment requirements, please see the loan tiers for the more detailed information. And then under the Tier 3 loan, we would put a notation that says for loans $50,000 and above, we would require evidence of one full-time.
So do you still keep the high probability even in, or a probability in the other tiers?
That's up to you.
Okay, well, that, and that was my question looking for, I guess I'm trying to figure out, back to, this is a business expansion loan program, so I guess you'd be expanding business to make more money, which may not yet be enough, it's kind of a question I'm kind of going through, may not be enough yet to add staff. But I guess I'm not, I'm trying to not lose the emphasis because we've got other programs, don't we, that, you know, I'm trying to think where somebody would use Tier 1 and 2.
Could be for a piece of equipment.
In this business expansion, okay.
Which would increase their efficiency or their productivity.
And it may reduce staff.
Yeah.
So do we care?
If they have a faster turnaround time, it could bring in more in the long term, but it's hard to predict.
But the way I interpret your suggestion is that we wouldn't have these two requirements for the smaller loan. Is that correct?
And it's entirely up to you. We were just addressing the requirement for full-time equivalency, where that would fit in best with the loan amounts. So whether you want to require something, if anything, for any loan amount below $50,000, that's up for you to discuss and decide.
I would think that it would be very, very hard to absolutely state that we are going to be able to add more people because we're going to increase our business because we're adding space or whatever it is. And to me, it's a.
So you like the high probability wording?
Yeah, it's a subjective thing rather than objective, and it kind of hangs out there for me. To make it absolute, like this will, I have a little problem with that, but that's where I'm coming from.
And I happen to agree. I like the high probability, and I agree with Counselor Ryan's at the $50,000 mark and above. So given that, then my question is on Tier 1 and 2, you know, it's just expansion, so their request really would be for something like equipment or like something, again, it would be somehow expanding their business, it just may not be FDE or some, okay.
Other comments? Okay, where do you suggest we proceed?
Well, if you would like to make a motion to accept the program with the changes about the full-time equivalent for $50,000 and above, and then stipulating that you'd like to see a high probability for those $50,000 and below, is that what I understand?
I believe that's right.
No, the high probability would be the only wording you'd use for the $50,000, for Tier 3.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought that's what you said.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
And that's for either hiring or retaining.
Right.
Correct.
Full-time equivalency, yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
But not for the $25,000.
No, the under, you know, you may get a much, let's say you are buying restaurant equipment, you may get much more efficient process where you only need one person on the line as opposed to one and a half, and you've actually shrink a person. But in the long run, that business would, if you have good stuff, it will probably expand and down the road, you would add something more. But in the $50,000 to $75,000 range, I think that there we could expect that at least they could retain a full-time equivalency, you know, as part of that deal. Maybe they aren't going to be able to hire somebody, but they shouldn't shrink because of that. Under that, I think it's more things that would make the workplace more efficient, and you may or may not lose an employee.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion to approve the wording of a high probability of adding or retaining staff to the Tier 3 of $50,000 and above?
I would second that.
Okay. Along with that motion, then, are you asking that we approve the entire program, or are we just approving that one item?
Ready to go? Yeah, oh.
You want to amend your motion to?
No, I see the.
One item. Okay. Well, we have a motion on the floor, and it's seconded discussion. Go ahead. Mr. Murray Ikas.
No, I have no discussion. I'm just saying I've got more in the proposal here, in addition to this.
All right, then we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to add the wording. Let me get back to it here.
High probability.
The high probability to retain or add staff. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Okay, more discussion. Mr. Murray Ikas.
Allison, I didn't see any reference to ADA compliance with this program. I did see it in the energy program.
Okay.
And I don't know if that was intentional on your part or not.
And this program may or may not trigger a physical, you know, a building-related improvement, so I can certainly add that language in under the conditions and considerations.
All right. Additionally, while we've got property owners covered on page 4 in terms of notarized authorization from a property owner, we don't have anything regarding the business owner, which we did have, do have with the energy program. Energy program has a paragraph regarding business owners must provide written authorization, $5,000 minimum personally guaranteed loan, and a five-year payback. And I, again, I don't know if that was intentional or not on your part to leave that out.
Okay. Well, I think in the case of the business applying, we would need the property owner permission for the business expansion loan, if there's a physical change. If there's no physical change to the building, then if it's just impacting the business, if it's a piece of equipment, let's say, that the business owner owns, then we don't really need that permission.
Okay.
So, and then for energy efficiency, what page did you see that on?
Page 1 of Exhibit A.
Okay, and for this, it would be, if there is a physical alteration, then we would need that as well for that one. Does that?
Yes, I would think so.
For energy efficiency, yeah, like a window change, let's say, if you want to improve your windows, then you would need permission.
I would think so.
From the building owner. So.
So I would ask that you include that.
Add that for business expansion.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
But only if it related to the real property, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, in the case of a physical change to the real property.
To the real property, yeah.
I also noticed, Allison, in the energy efficiency loan program, we've got a, under details regarding loan processing and closing costs paid by the borrower. And I didn't see that in the expansion loan program, nor did I see projects that do not comply with submitted plans will not qualify for 0% financing.
Uh-huh, okay. And I can make sure that 0% language is in the business expansion loan.
All right.
I apologize, we had several programs we were going at the same time here. In terms of the loan processing and closing costs paid by borrower, that is, let's see, that is the case for business expansion, except there are some fees that, as you see for Tier 1s, the deposit towards the loan processing fees is waived, but they would pay closing fees and anything associated, so I'll go ahead and make sure that's in there as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
One moment, please, Mr. Chair, I don't believe so. No more, thank you.
Okay, any comments? I'm wondering if we should wait until you have those changes done to bring that back to the next meeting, and we approve it at that time and after it's complete, or do, can we approve it now, Mr. Attorney?
I think you could approve it now if you're clear on what the changes are. However, as was noted, this is still subject to approval of an intergovernmental agreement.
We need to, yeah, we need to work with Cascades West.
There is still one additional step that needs to happen.
So we should take the step to, do Step 1 tonight?
It's entirely up to you. I think if you're clear enough without the changes being before you, I think you could do it. But if you think you have time, we still have to do an intergovernmental agreement.
Okay, what's the, what's the counsel?
What's the timeframe with the?
The agreement?
Yeah.
How long does that take?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Cascades West has them already developed with, like, Lincoln County, for example, so I'm assuming that they already have templates to use, so I don't know that it would be, you know, it could take two to four weeks depending on their availability with how quickly they'd want to get it going. But they've been very responsive.
But we need Step 1 before we can go into Step 2, is that correct?
Yeah, if we have a clarified program that will help speed up the intergovernmental agreement.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
Well, I'd be willing to move this forward conditioned upon the, you know, corrections made this evening, and I don't know if it's appropriate to, how do you want to handle the governmental agreement, direct staff would come back here anyway? So subject to the intergovernmental agreement coming back here, so for final approval?
Either of you.
We, and I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, any more discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. All right, next item.
Moving along to the energy efficiency loan. So this is in addition to the business expansion loan, another economic development tool that you approved to move forward. And the goal of this program is to provide existing commercial buildings located within the urban renewal district with funding for building improvements and equipment purchase that would result in creating energy efficiency, allowing for reduced business operating costs. We reviewed several existing funding programs, and we found three that were relevant to Lincoln City. One is the Energy Trust of Oregon, which provides tax credits and incentives. Another is the USDA Rural Development, which provides grants up to 25% of the project cost and loans up to 75% of the project cost. Their loan rates are higher than what we are offering. And the third program is the Department of Energy SLP Funds, or the State Energy Loan Program, and they obviously provide loans. Representatives from these agencies have provided feedback on the program that you have in front of you. They've been very helpful in answering questions about what they have available and how they do their programs. This program would work similar to the Facade Improvement Loan Program, except the requirement would be that they register their projects with the Energy Trust and the USDA. The reason being, if they have incentives available, we really want to make sure that those incentives are being used before our loans are gone into place. And then rather than, for example, the Facade Improvement Loan Program, I know you're all aware, but just for our viewing audience, that we have no-cost design services up to a certain amount, and that kind of helps make sure that everyone's on the same page with what those improvements are, and if we can encourage some additional improvements to help with the street, appearance of the street, then, you know, that's a great thing to have offered as the program. So in this case, the owners would have to get an energy assessment, and that's free through the Energy Trust. Then we would need the usual cost estimates for the work. And then after those incentives are determined through the other programs, then our loan would come in and make the project possible. And I think that pretty much covers it. Are there any questions or comments on this program?
Yes, sir. Mr. Murray Ikas.
Allison, on page 1 of your staff report.
Yes.
We are requiring registration with ETO and USDA. We're not requiring registration with ODOE?
No, they don't have an incentive program, they only have a loan program. And so if there were a project where, let's say, they wanted to borrow $75,000 from us, and they needed an additional however many thousand, they could turn to that program to, as another gap. But since they don't have incentives, we don't need them to register for that.
And I must respond to the needs question here. I mean, we interviewed 51 businesses, and we only had a response rate of like 17%. So I don't know how representative that is. To my mind, it's not terribly representative, but we'll see once we put the program out there, I suppose.
That's right.
I'm looking on page 1, Exhibit A, last bullet, first paragraph, recommends that any operating business attain other applicable certification. What does that refer to?
Yes, so in one of our last discussions, we had a recommendation that if it's a business applying for energy efficiency, that they also look into attaining C-Star certification, which is the Visitors and Convention Bureau's green, they had retail lodging and restaurant certifications, and there's a little logo that comes with it with recognition, a couple of levels, pretty simple, but just some really good awareness building for people about how they can reduce their energies. And what has occurred in the last few months is Travel Oregon, the state, now has their own program, and it seems as though that is a better kind of overarching program than the C-Star program. So it sounds like the VCB will be kind of phasing out C-Star and looking more to the state to do that kind of a marketing. So in that case, instead of telling them to go talk to the VCB, I just said whatever is applicable, and then we can just verbally tell them, please contact Travel Oregon if it's something you're interested in, and then that's something they can decide to do on their own.
Thank you. And one more, on page 2 of Exhibit A, seven-step application process number 4, number 5, you refer to outside banking representatives, and in the loan, Business Expansion Loan Program, we're referring to outside loan officers, and I'm wondering, is there a difference?
Yes. So the Energy Efficiency Loan Program would work through the same channels that we have established already for Facade Improvement Loan Program, which is through a bank in town, and then they have a person who we've worked with for, you know, a number of years, that does all the credit checks and makes sure that the people have done what they have said they're going to do, and they do that all for us, so we don't have to do the administration over the long term. You know, they send out the payment slips, take in the payments. So that is what I mean by outside banking representative. I didn't want to name a bank.
No.
In our document. And then for the, for the Business Expansion Loan Program, that is one that we feel most comfortable working with Cascades West, just because they have business expansion loans, it's old hat for them, it's very familiar, so that would make more sense. And they are the cog, so just being a local government representative, we thought that was a better fit.
I see, I see. So they're not a banking representative, they're a loan officer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Other comments? Other comments? Are we ready to make a decision?
It sounds like it's now ready to go and ready for final approval. Is that staff's understanding? No more?
Is there a motion?
I'd make the motion to approve the Energy Efficiency Loan Program.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Not all favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, moving along to the 35th Street parking lot. This is, this is moving, moving, moving. In 2007, the agency purchased two Nelscott District properties totaling 1.6 acres, and that's at the corner of Southwest 35th and Highway 101. And those purchases were made to realize projects that were outlined in the Nelscott Community Vision Plan. With the anticipated ODOT Highway 101-Nelscott project, the parking lot will help offset impacts to the area businesses. The initial project concept included a lotline adjustment between the two parcels to create opportunity for future development of Highway 101 frontage for the agency to partner with a developer or sell the land with conditions for a compatible and desirable project. In late January, you awarded the design contract to Group McKenzie, and in March, staff held a kickoff meeting, and thank you for those who attended. We had utility representatives, property and business owners, and city staff all in the same room to share information and get questions answered before the design work got underway. At this point, the consultants have three options for us to consider, so I'll go ahead and briefly summarize these three options. We have Option A. This is based off of ODOT's concept generated as they worked to finish the Highway 101 project. It has 10 parking spaces, one of which is an ADA accessible space, and this Option A provides access to the storm drain culvert. It has generous clearance to the motel sign, fire hydrant, and guy wire from the nearby power pole. It incorporates pervious concrete or asphalt in the parking spaces and standard asphalt or concrete for the drive lanes, only because when there's turning of the wheels, then the pervious surfaces can erode a little bit prematurely. So where the wheels would turn, they would want to do just a standard asphalt or concrete. So if you look at the design, where the red lines are would actually be a little bit of additional right-of-way, or we could get an easement from the property owner on the south side of 35th, and I'll show you an aerial here. And I'll show you an aerial here. You can see in the red circle, there's a little corner, and it's already paved, we're already using it in all practical purposes. The property just kind of juts out a little bit there into the street. So if we are able to get that easement, then we would design Option A according to the red lines. If we're not able to do that, then we can always scale it back a little bit and we would use the blue lines. Shall I move along to Option B? Or are there?
I was gonna ask you, Allison, with the sign that you say there's, you know, adequate clearance around, who owns that property that the sign is on?
I believe that is on our property.
So does that person pay rent to the city?
Not currently, no. The previous owner did have some kind of an agreement with that motel. And then when we purchased the property, we didn't, we didn't negotiate with having another agreement in place because we weren't sure of how the Highway 101 design would happen, where ODOT would need the right-of-way to be. We just didn't know, you know, how that footprint would look for that project. So we don't currently have an agreement with them.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Looking at this, this map, Allison, the top red line, curved red line indicates that that curb would come out an additional X number of feet?
Yeah, probably five, I would say five-ish, four to six, depending.
And the red line, red circular line, paperclip shaped?
Yes.
Line, the median, is that a median?
It is a medium, it just helps control traffic movements and creates a little refuge for pedestrians.
So that would move a little bit to the east?
Yes.
And the lower red indicator, is that an extra-large parking space?
On the, on the bottom of the page?
Lower right, yes.
That would just be extension, it would just be a larger, it's not a parking spot, that's like an elevated curb. So that would be similar to like a pedestrian refuge or help control the traffic movements.
So that would increase in size a bit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other comments on A? Let's go on to B.
Okay, and just to clarify for the viewing audience, the Highway 101 runs, this actually, north is to the left when you're looking at this image. Usually we look at maps, north is up, but in this case, it just worked better to do north is to the left, so east is up. Okay. So there again is the aerial with the corner property. And so Option B. Option B is more radial in design, and it has the same number of parking spaces as Option A. It has a little more crowded, the space around where the guy wire is. And it has a more creative layout for the access zone for the accessible parking space. You can see the accessible parking space is used as the access for the storm drain culvert. And it assumes the right-of-way easement on Southwest 35th Street. The dashed line, you can see where it says the letter B, the dashed line is actually the pavement, where the pavement ends. So that's kind of what we're using now. Are there any questions on, I know this is a lot, are there any questions on Option B?
What does the red triangle refer to, Allison?
The red triangle is that little piece of property on the aerial here that belongs to the south property owner that we would try to seek either easement or acquisition.
Okay.
That little tiny.
Thank you.
Triangle.
Allison, I'm confused a little bit by that kind of a check mark. Looks like a curb that runs almost the full distance of the thing on the south side. What is that for?
Yeah, I believe that that's pavement markings.
The what?
The pavement markings, like a white stop bar that you see when you get to an intersection. I don't think it's elevated. I'm pretty sure it's just a painted pavement marking.
So it's just a center line, you say?
Yes, mhm.
Okay. Other comments?
Well, and then what are the, I see the 12-foot, 12-foot with the two-stripe line down the middle, is that down the middle of the existing street there, 35th Street?
You know, I didn't have this overlaid onto the existing, but it looks like it's pretty close. It looks like it's pretty close to what's existing now in terms of pavement.
So I guess I was just confused because on Exhibit A, it didn't have a double stripe down the middle.
No, it didn't.
And so I wondered if there was something, but that only means an indicator, there's nothing unique about that piece.
Right.
Okay.
That would just put in to generate a comment?
I guess so.
Make sure everyone's paying attention.
But it's not like a divider?
No, no, I don't think that would be elevated. That's just a, like a striping down.
Okay.
To indicate that it's a two-way street and help with people staying on each side of the road, which they didn't do that in Option A, so.
Now, are you looking for comments on good and bad on any in all of these?
Yeah, if you, if you can help with direction of which of these three options you'd like us to pursue, that would be great.
Now, has ODOT approved all three of these?
No.
Okay.
No. And should we, should we jump to Option C?
Yeah, sure.
The Option A is the closest to what ODOT conceptualized when they did their highway project. And then B is very close. And then C, C is the most unusual from what ODOT initially designed. And so this one would need to have their approval. And this, this design option came up from some comments during the meeting about maximizing the parking of the area. So for Option C, this provides additional parking spaces to Option A or B. And it allows for entering from the north end of the strip. So one drawback would be that you can't access this from 35th Street. You would have to access it more from just the Nell Scott Strip driveline. It reduces or diminishes the opportunity for Highway 101 frontage development. You can see that there's a driveline there where we could do a lot line adjustment and have some more development as part of the strip. And it assumes ODOT approval of design and modifications to their Highway 101 plan, so we would have to have a meeting with them and make sure this is okay. It also assumes connection for, from the redesigned Nell Scott Strip parking area to the new parking lot. And it has relocated the ODOT-designed sidewalk out to the street. Some of you may recall that the sidewalk was, there was a landscaping area and then sidewalk was closer to the highway, and this kind of moves it a little bit closer. And moves the parking to the upper side of the grade, so they'll have to do a different strategy when it comes to the actual pavement, just because of the topography through the site there. So three, three options.
Comments on C?
Number of parking spaces on C is 15, so it picks up. And is that on the far left-hand side of the screen, that's how you enter?
Yes.
And that's by the Christmas cottage, and it would come shooting through and, okay?
Yes.
Because I do recall that discussion where the business owners were looking for as many new, many parking spaces as they could get.
This is the design that I was most interested in at the time, and I didn't hear ODOT say no way, so I was hoping that maybe they would consider it. But I prefer the C myself, just because of that. If you go back to B quickly and look at the easternmost parking space, next to the handicap.
Uh huh.
For someone to back out of there and be able to make that turn, they practically have to back into the road or the highway for them, the south, was it 34th there?
Yeah, 35th, mhm.
35th. They practically have to back into 35th. And I, that concerns me about movement of traffic in there.
Okay.
And I guess the reason, another reason that I really prefer the C is because it has five more spaces, and parking was an issue there.
One of the things, Mr. Chairman, though, if I heard Allison correctly, you're not able to enter the parking lot off 35th.
That's correct.
And as you recall, to get into Nell Scott Business District heading north, you have to go down 32nd and whip a U-turn and then come back versus, you know, if there's a way to bleed traffic off at 35th into this, you know, it would save, they might be more likely to park and shop?
You know, and ODOT was considering a number of different options at 35th as to how to direct traffic into Nell Scott going northbound. They were talking about a, one option was to cut off before 32nd and come around. Another one was to go around next to where the Fung Hing Yun is and then make a loop and come around. They had a number of different options, and I don't know that I ever heard that they came up with a, with a final.
Yeah, I think there's no cut in the meridian. That went away, and my last understanding is it was, you go down, you turn left at the light and go down 32nd, whip a U-turn.
Yeah.
And come back. So that's just something for me to consider. I like the additional of the parking. I wish there was a way to get folks in from 35th into here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was gonna ask you, Allison. I heard in one of the planning, someone brought up that where that existing sign is or close to it, somewhere in that general proximity, there might be an opportunity to do a different type of signage or have there be something that, you know, is maybe more generic to the area.
Mhm.
And I didn't realize, and I haven't stopped to think about like where the one is now, who owns that or how it's going to be controlled, but would one of these designs lend itself to signage differently than the other? I mean, would, and I think C too, you do have more spaces, but it would probably cost more money to develop it that way, wouldn't it?
I believe that would, yeah, that sounds reasonable. It's more, it's more paving area and it's bringing the project kind of over onto where, you know, the property is a little bit narrower at the top there, so.
Yeah, I mean, I know the way the topography of the land is now, is the land closest to 35th is most level with that.
Right.
And then it starts falling off a lot.
Mhm.
And so I'm all forgetting as many spaces as you can, but I, I would think that the C would have to really be looked at to know how feasible it is, you know, like a cost-benefit analysis before we, before we, unless that's what this is. I mean, if they're saying we can do this. No, I, I get that, but.
Well, that's why we contract with engineers, so we can have, have, you know, the experts understand what the site is and what, what design can be handled on the site. So I, I believe it's feasible, or they would not have, they would have said, no, this is going to be way too expensive, or, you know, not sound, or when we get to, you know, that's why they do core samples to test for soil conditions. And they, they are the experts when it comes to designing in these situations, so.
It's just that I saw above in the budget, you know, there's an amount, you know, the $150,000. I guess what comes first, the cart or the horse? If you have a design, then you can get the actual number.
Right.
That it will cost to build.
Right.
But I'm, I'm just guessing that C is going to be more expensive than the other two.
Allison, is it possible for us to run all three of these by ODOT and come back to us and to know, so we know whether or not they're even willing to go with something like C?
Well, I believe, you know, A is the closest to what they have already conceptualized, so I don't, and we can certainly do that. I think it's more a question, if you're wanting to do C, that's more the issue than A or B, just because they're already, I think, expecting to see something similar to A or B. And because C is different with access management, that, that would be, you know, definitely worth a conversation.
Other comments?
Allison, could you go back to the bird's eye view and give us a pointer here where, yeah, see, there's not enough space near to tell how far down the entrance would be and things like this, not enough, I don't know, I'm having a hard time visualizing C in my mind.
Okay.
Without an overlay or things like that, I'm having a hard time imagining. Would that knock out one of the, one of the spaces there for a future shop that we had planned or something else like, there was a space there, real building, I think, or something else like this at one time?
Yeah, so.
You also, you know, there's some real estate there as far as, I thought there was supposed to be some land that was supposed to be sold for another commercial spot, so you can take that away and you can put like a road and put a parking space?
Right, yeah, this, this would trade that.
That's, that's another trade-off I think we're missing too, is that's another shop you're missing there, mutual commercial development for a parking space, maybe, what, three parking spaces?
Yeah, they're, they're showing three in that location.
And then we have a problem with, like you're saying before, with the way the traffic flows, things like this, we're disrupting the traffic flow that ODOT had planned. I'm not saying, I don't want to mess with ODOT either, but like I say, we have to wave, you know, commercial development, things like this too, with three parking spaces and the entrance exit right there. That's my, you know.
But, Mr. Chairman, I guess, I don't disagree with that, that's what this C is doing, but I would argue that the land doesn't have value, the other site doesn't have value without parking spaces. We know some are going to be eliminated with the change, so we're trying to feed more parking. So it, to me, I would agree that somehow run A and C past ODOT to see, you know, do they have a, an issue with C? Because I'm not hearing us have to make a decision tonight. It's, it's a, you know, is this viable and something that we want to run by ODOT? But I agree, what you're giving up is that, that one lot?
Well, Mr. Chairman, that was part of what I was trying to say about cost. I mean, C is the most expensive. And do we know with, and if I knew, I've forgotten, with the highway modification there, how many parking spaces might be lost? I mean, do we?
I don't have those number, I should have looked at that.
Because, you know, it may be?
Well, they are going to go to diagonal, so they'll be able to squeeze a few more in, but, you know, it is going to be a one-way street instead of two, so, and it does get tightened up, so there will be a loss of spaces there.
Plus on, on 32nd as well, that they're going to lose, what, three or four or five spaces there?
The parallel spaces, yes.
Right. So if we, if we're not adding any more spaces but losing spaces and adding another building there, we're creating a kind of a double-edged sword here.
But if this?
Did we, and I'm sorry, I should have asked away from the meeting, so I'm not burning up so much meeting time, but wasn't there also an option with the Eagles parking lot to come in and maybe use a few spaces there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the status of that, but I believe there was some conversation about using the Eagles parking, part of it as public parking, but I don't know what's been decided.
Yeah, because of the way it laid out, coming in off of coast.
There were a couple of options there.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I guess I am not clear at this point what the question of these three, what's before us? You know, eliminate one, choose one? I'm not ready to vote on spending money, so, you know, that's off the table.
Yeah, and we're not asking to spend money. This is just a clarification to help narrow down what the options are for design work, just because the consultant can't fully design all three options or it would be much more expensive. So this is just kind of a general, get a sense from how you all are feeling. If you want to have conversation, we can bring this Option C to ODOT.
Well, I think. Well, I think that from what Mr. Anderson said, that item B and, or items, A and C would be worth sending to ODOT just to get a preliminary on their part, saying that would not, they would not reject, and we could go forward from there.
Okay.
Is there consensus to do that? Okay, let's, let's proceed that way.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take A and C, and then we'll bring it back.
Just run by ODOT, see what, see what they say.
All right.
Okay. Next item.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Project updates.
All right, project updates. We have the D-Lake traffic signal. Just real briefly, we did the three kickoff meetings with the parking lot, the traffic signal and the undergrounding. We had great turnout, very good discussion, and the design work is underway. All the utility locates have been done, and they've done test core drilling, and we've had so much support from private property owners who've allowed that to happen, so thank you to those people. And everything's moving along. We're at 30% design drawings for the traffic signal, and then the D-Lake undergrounding, they were out surveying today, so everything's moving along as planned. Just a quick update on the RFP for the 15th Street development site. Staff completed a draft RFP, and we have given that to the city attorney to review, so that is in his work queue, and we will bring that back to you for review.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie? Our finance director has a question to present.
Ooh. Good evening. Back in October, October '22, Ron had a resolution that you approved to issue up to $3 million of DJR financing. That's financing that we do in the Urban Renewal Agency, where we issue debt one day and then we pay it off the next day. We actually did 2.5 million. We had only budgeted to do 2 million, and so this, this resolution is to increase the debt payment from 2 million to 2.5 million. That will be funded by a decrease in the required reserves, so instead of having to keep a million dollars in reserve, we only have to keep 500,000. So this resolution just transfers money from the, from the required reserves to the, to debt payment.
Any discussion? I would entertain a motion to...
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution UR 2013-04.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor of passage of the resolution UR 2013-04? Say aye.
I think we need to do a...
You need a roll call on that?
Roll call.
Okay, roll call, please.
Aunt?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Ellingson?
Yes.
Norakis?
He's stepped out.
And Sprague?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is agency member comments, anyone? If not, I will adjourn the meeting.